You have the high sign? So it is 6 o'clock. We will call our meeting to order.
Or do you get ahold of us when it's up?
Are there any additions or deletions, corrections to the agenda? Hearing none. Will you take a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Last chance. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. We have an agenda. Role has been taken. Is that true?
It's true.
Role has been taken, yes. For all of you, please rise and join us for plegial egress.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. And welcome, everyone. Next item, we are to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 9th, 2023 regular session.
So moved.
Support.
Motion support. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions, comments, criticisms?
No criticism.
Nothing? Don't say you weren't given the opportunity.
Snidey mark.
No snidey marks, no criticisms.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Moving right on down to hearings. First up, we have a public hearing to consider a special assessment role for unpaid charges for noxious weeds, noxious weed cutting, sidewalk replacement, and utility billing charges for 2022. Your pleasure to open the hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Support.
Motion support. Comments, no? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Public hearing is open.
All right. Yes, in your packets, you have a long list of folks who have backed utility account charges that have not been paid as of yet, tolling, some water bills, wastewater, that sort of thing. They have $32,425.99 underneath the sidewalk replacement program. We have, not too many, but we have a few, for a total of $7,649.76. But underneath, at least underneath the sidewalk replacement program, they do have a time period that they can pay that back with a small interest fee. So that one's not such a problem. Frozen meters, we have one that was frozen and need to be replaced and is charged to the homeowner. That's for $320.11. And then noxious weed cutting. Actually, this is a pretty short list. So the extra fees that we've been charging for the mowing is obviously helping a little bit, but the total fees in those are $4,374.11 for weed cuttings that we have to send our contractor to take care of.
So that includes the penalty?
That includes the penalty, yes. Yep. But that's a pretty short list, actually.
There's a few they're probably going to be doing in the next couple of days or two.
Yes, we've already sent out. We've already sent out. Mike told me, before I left on Wednesday afternoon, he was sending them all out. We had at least 15 residential loans to deal with at that point. So, and I'm sure there's probably others that he's sent them all out to, too.
Can you tell people that were frequent flyers in the past if the fines are helping? Because, I mean, it seems like it's been kind of a delayed grass-growing season, so it might be shorter just because...
Well, that could be. That's a good point. That's a good point. But 1, 2, 3, 3 of these, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 3 of them are frequent flyers.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any more comments from the board? Hearing none. It is a public hearing. It's any members of the public that would like to address the commission in relation to this topic. Please go to the podium, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. Seeing no one approaching the podium, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion, support. And last chance for comments. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. The hearing is closed. Next, you may consider a resolution confirming the special assessment role for unpaid charges as of May 19th, 2023, and authorize the charges to be placed on the July 1, 2023 tax roll under respective tax roll items. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Okay. And that, the tax rule, the tax automatically includes that sidewalk option for the folks.
That is correct. Yep, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Looks like we have adopted it, so thank you very much. Motion is passed. Next, a public hearing to receive a presentation, a public comment on an application for funding through a low-interest loan program through the state of Michigan Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, which is abbreviated as DWSRF. Your pleasure to open the hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Support.
Motion support. Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Public hearing is open. Thank you.
Eric? Yes, we have a, yep, we have a presentation. Lou Fleury from OHM, he's going to walk through the application, our projects, and take any public comment. This is one of the steps of submitting this application. As we've been discussing, as we get our water rates and rate of service fees coming up in our agenda, we've been talking about getting those projects completed, the capital side of things. We're going to need either this program or the, and/or the USDA program to get these capitals done, so I'll let Lou take it over.
Thank you. Is this on?
We can use the mic, we'll pick it up from there, too.
So tonight's presentation is to fulfill public outreach requirements established by the DWSRF program. Oh, this wheel is touchy. There we go. So DWS is a low-interest loan program administered by Eagle and Michigan Finance Authority. It has been used for years by communities to do upgrades to their water systems. A typical loan is financed over 20 years at 2% interest, roughly. The interest rate does fluctuate from year to year, and they have not come out with a new race as of yet. Now, with the infrastructure bill recently passed in Congress, $55 billion has been allocated for communities who are planning for improvements to their water and sewer systems. So by going through this process, you have a possibility of capturing some of those grant dollars to offset the financing cost. Now, the numbers we're going to share with you tonight do not assume any grant money in terms of the cost to the users. They assume loan home. Agenda items, we're going to talk about the needs of the project, principal alternatives, selected alternative, construction schedule, associated costs, capital costs and cost to the user, the social environmental impacts of this type of construction and mitigation efforts, and then the benefits of the project, and then I'll open it up for questions. And then lastly, for your consideration, will be a resolution to support. So a need for the project. So over the past several weeks, we've been working with city staff to discuss what the short- and long-term needs are for the water system. So this list you hear, you see here is a summary of those needs, and it mainly consists of five different components. And when we talk about the system, we are not talking about the regional supply GAWA system. We are focused on the storage and distribution within the city that's under the jurisdiction of the city, maintained by the city. So looking at the needs, the first component is the water lines. So you have a lot of, the city has a lot of aging water lines in the system. Based on city records, over 43% of the main is over 100 years in age. Typical useful life of a water line is between 50 and 75 years. After that point in time, those lines are much more susceptible to breaking down. And in discussing the project with city staff, we know that dealing with breaks is an ongoing, has been an ongoing issue. In addition to the age, a lot of these lines are undersized, so these smaller lines are difficult to achieve fire flow. One of the deficiencies that was pointed out in the last water reliability study of 2018 showed that there were several areas throughout the city where you cannot get adequate fire flow. That's because of these smaller lines. Secondly, the elevated storage tank. So the city's consultant had done an inspection report recently identifying some of the needs of the water tank off Jerome, one of which is the exterior painting. The exterior needs to be repainted. The cathodic protection needs to be installed. This is a system that goes inside the bowl and protects, it's a corrosion protection device for the exposed steel. And then lastly, the abutnices need some overhaul, the overflow vent, and the ladders and the landings. The elevated storage tank control building. So this is the small control building that's situated underneath the tank. It was constructed at the same time as the tank in 1964. It houses all of the controls for the tower. Over time, the moisture has gotten into this, and it's, there's a lot of rot, and it needs to be replaced.
The whole building?
The whole building. It's a really, it's fairly small. Water meter replacements. In general, most of the water meters are over 20 years in age. What happens during this time is, you know, when they get that old, you have inaccuracies. So the plan is to not only replace the meters, but also replace or upgrade the technology. Right now, the city staff has to walk up to each home to collect the reads. So the plan is to go to a radio read where city staff can drive down the block and collect the data just by driving down the block. So a significant increase in the efficiency of going through that process. And then lastly, the lead service lines. So this is to comply with Eagle's lead and copper rule that basically states that all galvanized and lead lines must be replaced. Now, these are the service lines we're talking about, small line that goes from the street into the home. So the city at this point knows of 112 of those locations throughout the city. So these are the kind of the five main components based on the needs, and going through these with city staff. Now we'll drill down into the projects as we touch. On the water main projects, we've identified nine different locations. You can see, I hope you can see the map. They are kind of spread evenly throughout the city. You've got West Center Street, North State Street, Chatterton Street, Pine Avenue, Charles Avenue, Richmond Street, Austin Street, and South River Avenue, Rosedale Street, as well as Moyer Avenue. The last five of those locations are actually projects that would be coordinated with the street's paving program. Now we get to the storage tank. So this is an aerial view of the storage tank on Jerome Road. You can see the bowl, obviously, at the top, and I think you can see, if you can make out the red square, that's actually the location of that small structure that sits underneath. So that's the structure we're talking about that needs to be replaced. This is a map which shows the general locations of the 112 service leads that are either lead or galvanized that are slated for replacement with this project. Now, project alternatives. So what we did, what you're looking at here is the column to the left, there are all of the project components we just talked about, and then the next two columns are different alternatives to see, you know, what is going to be the most cost-effective way to tackle this. So with the water main replacements, what we looked at was alternative one being a conventional open-cut trench method of installing the water main. This is where the contractor goes down the street, opens up a trench, places the new line, puts in the new services, the hydrants, the valves, fills the trench back up, and restores all of the disturbed areas with light material. Alternative two was taking a look at maybe horizontal drilling of the water main. This is trenchless. This is where the contractor digs a pit on one side and the other and pushes the line without digging a trench. It's not 100% trench-free. You know, all the service lines and the valves on the line, the hydrant assemblies everywhere where you're crossing a water line, at intersection, those are all dug up. So it's not 100% trench-free, but nonetheless, a comparison needed to be made cost-wise. The elevated storage tank alternatives, that was going to be comparing the rehab that was suggested versus replacement of the tank. The small control building, we know regardless of the building, and the building has to be replaced. It's just, it's too far gone, there's a lot of rot. So the two things that we looked at was placing a permanent generator there for backup power or doing a portable that you would have to take out there as needed. And then the last two items, the other meter replacements and lead service lines, there was no other viable, really, alternatives. These need to be done and are required to maintain the system and for public health and safety and to comply with the agency requirements. So those are the kind of the two different alternatives to kind of compare the costs. So what do the costs look like? This is a breakdown of cost per component for the two different alternatives. As you can see, the water main component is by far the most costly with the largest price tag. Alternative one being $14.96 million and alternative two being just north of $19 million. So looking at the numbers, obviously, you know, alternative one is the least costly and the one that we would recommend as the alternative to go for these improvements. So what the recommended project would look like then is you would do all of the water main replacements that we mentioned at the nine various locations, the last five of which would be done there with your street notes program. And then the elevated storage tank rehab, doing the repainting, the elevator, or the storage tank control building reconstruction with the permanent generator, and then doing the water main replacements, and then lastly, doing the service line replacements. So construction schedule-wise, this follows Eagle's fourth quarter funding. So just taking a look at a couple of line items, what this would be basically is, in the winter of '24, you would be submitting preliminary construction documents for approval. And what that allows you to do is, down below, the third from the bottom, is your loan closing, which would be end of summer, August 28th, for a loan closing, notice to proceed of October. And then you can see down at the bottom, so due to the size of this project, this would be carried through a two-year period, 2024 through 2026. There's too much work to get done in one season. So this follows Eagle's fourth quarter financing schedule. This is just the, as we mentioned, the selected alternative all by itself on the table. You can see the cost per component, $9.47 million for the water main, $730,000 for the storage tank rehab, the control building, $430,000, meter replacements, $3.29 million, and just north of $1 million for the lead service line replacements, for a total of $4.96 million. So what does this mean to the user now? Financing this, again, financing, 100% financing. So this is a breakdown per component, and all the way to the right of the table shows you the impact for the monthly increase in cost for a typical household. So you can see the water main, it was $14.50 a month. Elevated storage tank was $1.17. The control building was $0.67. Meter replacement, $5.08, and the lead service line is $1.67. So the total impact, the total cost approximately of an increase per month would be $23.08. And again, this assumes you do not receive any grant dollars to offset the financing cost of the project. What are the environmental impacts for a project like this? Well, you're going to have traffic disruption, you're going to have noise and dust. We know, we think, based on what we've looked at, there is the possibility of threatened endangered species in some of these locations. We know that there's documented contaminated sites near several of the projects, or a few of the projects. And we know the North Street Water Main Project is in the historic district. And looking at the map, if I can get to it, the mouse isn't working. There we go. So the map to the left, this shows all the triangles, the red and yellow, those are all documented contaminated sites throughout the city. And these fall under the category 201 or 213. 201 is the result of chemical spills typically. 213 are typically leaking underground storage tanks. And then to the right, if you can see the red symbols, those are four different locations that are historic markers or sites that are in and around the, some of the project locations. So mitigation of these areas and other environmental issues. So the contract when it's set up will have traffic control, so yes, you're going to have some slow-moving traffic, but bottom line is there would not be any street closures. Working hours would be built into the contract, so you're not going to be waking up at 4:00 a.m. to do construction noise. Sedimentation, so erosion control measure would be in place. On curbed streets like this, typically, filter fabrics will be placed in the catch basins to prevent sediment runoff into the river. And then with the wetland permitting, potential wetland permitting, and the endangered species, you know, as you get into it and start preparing the contracts, and going through those agencies, if there's anything unique that needs to be dealt with as a result of going through and dealing with these folks, those would be built into the construction contract. Surface restoration, all of this disturbed areas would be restored in light material, whether it's a green belt or a drive approach, or a pavement repair where you have a crossing water main, this wall will be restored with light material. And then for the environmental contaminated areas, you know, as you get into the building of the contract, you take a look at the baseline environmental assessments, a lot of these sites that are on file have these. That gives us an idea of where the limits are of the potential contamination. And so what's done is, instead of opening up and doing the conventional open trench, you do a directional drill through that area, you don't open the ground up. So that's how you work around those areas to minimize the impact. Social impacts, I think you could expect for temporary construction, related jobs, temporary, you know, for the two-year period. We don't see any long-term social impacts. The one not on the list that I want to mention is water disruption during construction. So folks are not going to be out of water the entire time the water main is going in the ground. What happens is the existing system stays in place and services the homes. Let's say you're on a block. While the new line is being installed, the new line is installed to the property lines. And then, prior to connecting that last section over to the individual service leads, is when you do the water shut-offs, and that stuff will be communicated to the folks living within the block. And typically, you could probably expect a one-to-two hour delay of water, but no long-term disruption in water service when they're doing this type of work. Social mitigation, in going through the bidding process, ensures that you're going to get qualified contractors bidding on the project. There's a qualification section, you know, in the front-end documents so that you know you have qualified contractors working in the area. And socially, you know, another social issue, you know, this, there are no expansion, we're not doing great expansion into new areas. All of this work is just rehabbing existing service areas in the city. So what are the benefits of doing this work? Well, number one, you increase the reliability of the system by decreasing your breaks that you have. You know, you're reducing the disruption of service. You're also decreasing the O&amp;M cost. These things add up and can get costly, especially if the water main is under the street and you have to go and repair it. So you're decreasing the cost for operation and maintenance. And then protection of public health, that comes with the replacement of the lead and service lines. I know I went through that kind of fast, but if there's any questions, I'll take any questions.
Okay, who's the first question?
Can you explain the reason, like our water tank is in good enough shape that you feel like it's worth paying the $773,000 to rehab it? I mean, like, how long does that last, or does it make more sense to...
Yeah. So we rely on the consultant, the city had hired a separate consultant to do the inspection. And based on the condition, what they also do is they take a look at structurally, what kind of structural condition the pipe is in, this tank is in steel. They can tell by doing certain tests how much corrosion there is. Does it make sense to do the painting versus just scrapping it? And so based on those investigations they've done, definitely, it looks like the painting's, the cost-effective way to cover versus scrapping and building new tanks.
Thank you.
Lou from the new, I can never pronounce it, but the protective coating on the interior...
Cathodic?
Cathodic.
Yeah.
That, is that something that we've done in the past, or is this something...
I don't know if there's one existing in place that very commonly put in the interior of the bowls. All it does, it puts an electric current within the water itself. And by doing that, it's a way of protecting the exposed steel from corrosion. I do not know if there is one, there is one in this. So this is an overhaul of the old system.
Was I correct in the, the cost of trenching is cheaper than the cost of, really?
I get that question a lot.
That just surprised me.
It's not ours. It's not ours. You know, some of the factors are, you know, how many services are there, how many valves are there? Because as I mentioned, each of those are open cuts. It's not truly directional drill. And then the contractor's cost per foot to drill the pipe is much more than, so it can be at times more cost-effective. It just depends on a lot of different factors.
Just surprised me.
Yeah, it can be, yeah.
Is it safe to assume those lines going from the main to the house? I forget, there was 120 something you said?
112.
Because I know one of the big problems with a lot of the old homes in Alma is that line is so small that their water pressure is really bad. So is it safe to assume those new lines will be bigger in diameter and better for the water pressure for those houses?
It'll definitely, if you have some tuberulation inside those lines, especially the galvanized, gets a lot of buildup inside, and the outside is actually a normal-sized standard line, but the inside is very, very, becomes very, very small. So yes, the answer to your question, yes, when you put the new line in there, the pressure will be restored.
The other question I had was, you mentioned 43% of our current lines in the ground are over 100 years old. I'm presuming that this project, all these different lines we're talking about, is not going to make a big difference in that number. Do we even have any idea what percentage it's going to go down to that's, or what we're going to reduce that 100-year-old number by?
I don't have the figure in front of me yet, but I would agree with you that it is probably a small dent.
This isn't going to be a large percentage?
It is not.
Going down to 20% or something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right.
So we still have a lot of 100-year-old pipes in the ground, even after this $19,900 More questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anybody from the public have any questions?
When you had the hazardous material sites, you had those on your, online, where they're blown up and where they're at exactly? And what is the cause of the contamination?
Yeah, a lot of that...
They couldn't see anything up there.
Yeah, we can actually provide the PowerPoint to anyone who wants to have it. I don't have the individual reports or the background for those sites currently.
The PowerPoint is on the website right now. Our meeting pack is, the PowerPoint is in there. And then I'm sure if you need additional, like additional information, if you talk to Dave, I'll volunteer him. I think he can probably identify those specifics for you.
And the cost, you had each broken down per house?
Yes.
That's not factoring the waste cost?
This is just the water component? Just the water system?
Just the supply, that, the...
Not the sanitary?
It's in the house, still got to get it out. Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So...
Okay, is it Roger?
Sure.
And Michelle? Okay. Last chance for comments. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion is passed, the hearing is closed. Next, we are to consider a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2024 planning document and authorize submission of the planning document as a first step in the state revolving fund loan application process.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion support. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on down to resolutions. First, we need to consider a resolution to adopt an increase in water ready-to-serv and usage rates to become effective July 1, 2023. And the note on the motion here says the water rate, unit charge of per 1,000 gallons will increase from $3.69 to $5, and the readiness to serve fee will increase in accordance with the fee schedule included.
Yep, that will go up.
It's buried down here in the document, I think.
Yep, that will go up on a percentage wise, it's a lot. It's 130% increase from a percentage standpoint. As we discussed, on a one-inch meter for the homes that we're discussing, residential homes, that means that will go up $15.30 in the first year. And like we discussed, we're going to spread that over the two years. And next year, we're looking at, we were looking at $10.50. And if you remember from Lou's presentation, we were talking, he was talking about $23 and change increase needed to cover this loan through, through the state revolving loan. So we're really close on what we needed to, to do these projects. But like again, those are just estimates, but that's where we're at.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? Hearing done. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, it would be no? Motion is carried. Now, we consider a resolution to adopt an increase in wastewater ready-to-serve rates to become effective July 1, 2023. And our note here indicates that the wastewater rate unit charge will remain at $3.90 per thousand gallons used, but the readiness to serve fee will increase according to the fee schedule provided. I believe he's got that up now, so.
And that, it will be going up 25%. And like we discussed, we're in better shape with our wastewater fund than our water fund. We're doing a lot of catch up on the water, so. And that's, we also discussed as a group to hold our unit costs for this wastewater for a couple of years to kind of spread out the costs across all our different enterprise funds, so. That's where we're at with those.
So you're trying to lessen the pain, but it's still going to be, it's going to get nothing but worse going forward.
Like you said, it's, we're putting $19 million into our water, our water system. And like you said, we have 43%.
We're still going to have 40% or roughly that. So these three are replaced. But these are major components. It's a good start, so.
Move to adopt.
Got a motion in support? Any more comments or questions?
Sorry.
No, no. Should have done that first. My apologies. Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion is carried. Number three is to consider a resolution adopting an increase in the solid waste ready-to-serve rates from $21.56 per residence to $22.12 per residence to become effective with all solid waste bills mailed after July 1, 2023. And the note says the solid waste increase reflects an increase in the trash and recycling portion due to an annual 5% increase in the five-year contract we have with our current waste services provider, which is Grainger. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion support.
And as correct, we are not increasing for the first three years the yard waste portion of it, the bag pickup, the chipping and leaf pickups for the first three years to kind of spread that, to spread that out. Again, we try to lessen the blow, but still for $22.12 for trash recycling, one large item pickup per week and yard waste. It's a, it's a very good deal.
It's a good price, unfortunately.
It is.
It's good. Everything just gets more expensive. Okay, any comments? Questions? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no?
I'm going to abstain.
And one abstention.
If I be Mr. Mayor, she just needs to state the reason for her abstention.
Us. Would you like to state the reason before your abstention, please?
Grainger is my employer.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Michelle. So with that, the motion still has carried. And we'll have another rate increase, so. Should make us all very popular.
Yes.
I should have asked when you said questions, but the 5% you said annual, does that mean for the five-year contract, it is a 5% increase every year for the five years? And then we?
And then we go off a bit again.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Just clarifying.
And just as a reminder, that's a contractor we're with St. Louis on.
That's correct. Everything that we have here, they have.
Some players, mirrors, basically acting as a unit, so.
That's correct.
So item number four, consideration of a resolution to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2024 annual city budget. And the note says the fiscal 2024 annual city budget was presented to the city commission and general public on April 11, 2023. A public hearing was held on the proposed financial plan at the May 9, 2023 city commission meeting, which included a review of the proposed millage rates pursuant to the Alma City Charter, Chapter 6, Section 6.4. The city commission is required to adapt, adopt an annual city budget no later than June 1st of the given year. So we're kind of close. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion support, comments or questions?
I just want to, I just want to do a couple of things that have been updated with the extra information we have for our enterprise funds. We have no changes from our public hearing and our general fund expenditures of revenue. And that's, we're balanced and no use of fund balance. With the wastewater utility, we are looking obviously at some capital improvements there. So we will be applying for some SRF funding through that program too for the wastewater utility. And with the fees for the application and the engineering that needs to happen here coming up for, for capital, we increased that amount $163,125, which is now $3,352,000. And in our public hearing, we had that wastewater utility number at $3,188,875.
It's an increase of what?
$163,125. And then under our Public Works Steel Column Repair, we were hoping to have that done in this fiscal year, but we put up a bid and no takers. So we're going to roll that into this coming year's budget. And we have that budgeted at $70,000. That's the only reason that that got moved over there. And we did, we were able to take out in, from the public hearing, an $8,000 request for a pressure washer for the Public Works Department. We were able, we had some money left over still within our budget for Public Works. So we were able to get one procured, will be on your consent agenda, most likely the next meeting, so. So we took that one out. So those were the changes that, from our public hearing that, that were made, so. Like I said, I'm happy to say from our general fund, we balanced, no, nothing being taken from our general fund. We're actually growing our, our general fund to put toward capital projects across the community.
Yay.
Yeah. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody in the staff and, and for the commission, because we went through a lot of discussions on all this stuff here the last few months, so.
Always fun.
Yes, it was.
Always fun. Anybody else have comments or questions? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. We have a budget. Congratulations. Thank you for all your work, Curtis and your team and, and everybody across all the departments, because I know everybody has a hand in that rather major project. Now, consideration of a resolution, no, we just did that, sorry. Moving down, reports of officers, boards of committees.
Budget amendments.
Oh, budget amendments, I didn't. Okay. Consideration of a resolution to approve fiscal year 2023 budget amendments presented.
Move to adopt.
Got a motion support? You want to go over it quick?
Yep, we can do that, yeah. We just got four of them here. In our IT budget, we're going to increase that by 5,000. And that's not going to be a change to our budget. We're taking 5,000 from the finance department to offset that cost. And that's, we got savings there because we had a much cleaner audit, obviously. So we needed a lot less auditor fees. So we were able to save money there and use that to get some of our IT projects that we did over this year that we didn't necessarily know we're going to budget or do. Public safety and code enforcement, we have, we have a expenditure of $10,000 and we decreased the contribution to the rural fire board expenditure by 10,000 to cover the additional legal fees incurred by code enforcement. There's no impact to the general fund for that. Underneath our new funding model for the rural urban fire board, we were estimating that our, our costs would be higher, but it wasn't. So we did have some money there. We were able to move over there. So there's no effect to our overall budget. We, we needed to increase the downtown maintenance expenditure budget by $11,000 and increase the oversight cemetery budget by $10,250. And increase the recreation and culture parks expenditure budget by $19,000. And we, doing this, we just moved money from, decreased that amount from the billings and grounds expenditure budget of $40,250. So it's just moving one internal service fee amounts to, to other, other departments. And then increase the parking lot expenditure budget, $786,737. And increase the intergovernmental revenue of $786,737 for the capital project cost for the downtown parking lots. That's covered by our ARPA money that, that we received here at the city. And we approved that purchase order on 4/20 of this year. So we're just going to move that project into the new fiscal year, but no impact to our overall budget, so. And all things being good, this would be our last budget amendments for the FY '23 year, so.
Questions? I believe we do have a motion, so all those in favor would be yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is passed and the amendments are, I guess, adopted. Reports now of officers, boards and committees. Commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution or any commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. Tonight, we have Alma Police Department, April 2023 report, Assessing Department Annual 2023 Report, Tresha Area Water Authority Draft Minutes of May 11, 2023, a finance report for May of 2023, and the City Manager's Newsletter. Your pleasure on receipt of these items.
Kathy, are you talking and you're good with what we have?
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, I was just going to hold it out.
I have it in my newsletter, so we can discuss it there.
Okay.
Eric will do the talking.
Okay, I just moved to receive Alma Police Report, Assessing Department, GAWA and Finance Report, 1 through 4.
I hear support. I hear support, all right. Okay, motion support. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Okay, motion is passed. We have received four reports. entertain a motion. Here we go.
Move to receive the City Manager Newsletter.
Support. Got a motion and we got lots of support, so.
All right, so we already got the SRF for presentation out of the way, so procurement policy. We talked about this last year and, and also the next meeting we'll bring back our finance policy for investments. We'll be talking about that because a couple of meetings ago, we talked about Michigan class and that sort of thing. So we're going to bring back some things to discuss on how we proceed forward with some more of our investments going into the new year here. But our procurement policy, currently our folks that are not department heads, their spending limit is $500. It's, at times that makes it real tough for superintendents, police chief, fire chief to get things purchased on a supply level or day-to-day type things without going and getting a request, but anything over 501 has to go to department head. A purchase order has to be created, runs through finance, that gets approved. So sometimes that can delay things for a day or two depending on who may be at work or not at work. Currently, the thresholds are 500, 2,500, which is department heads. And I'm sorry, $5,000 for department heads and $10,000 at the city manager level. And after $10,000, it all comes here for approval. Anything under that obviously still comes through and you see as a commission through the consent agenda. What staff would like to do, and we want to get your input, is those folks that are non-department heads that do have the authority to purchase supplies and those sort of things, to raise it up to $2,500. And so we don't have to go through the, the purchase order policy as often. There's some benefit to that from the standpoint of moving along, but also there is still oversight because it has to be within the budget. That's, I know our department heads are very much in their day-to-day of their superintendents and, and their other, the police chief and fire chief, so they know what's going on. That still has to come through to them anyway and the finance director. And if it's big enough, then obviously that goes on to the chain from there. So from that standpoint, we just wanted to get the commission's thoughts and feelings on that. That $500 limit's been in there since the early 90s. I remember discussing that around the roundtable back in the day when I was a new stat member.
So when we increased, it was the department heads we increased, not too long. Of course, I thought we had discussed this.
Yep, we did increase the, in the same year. We did not do that for those folks like the superintendents, police chief, fire chief.
So it's not anybody in the whole?
No. Very much.
Okay, well, I just was, I'm just checking because.
Do you remember what the department head increase was the last time it was increased?
Pretty sure it was $2,500.
Yeah, I think it was $2,500.
It was a thousand? Maybe it was $1,005. The chief says it was $1,000 to $5,000.
I guess, do we have any sense of how frequently this is problematic? And I guess the other question that comes to my mind, I mean, I don't know how big of a problem this is, but does it make sense that everybody has the same limits? I mean, there's, you know, some departments, I can see buying large repair items for a truck or something might be a very different game than somebody buying office supplies for, you know, an office. And maybe it makes sense to just have universal, but.
I think I approved 22 purchase orders since April 1st of amounts between $500 and $1,500.
Selective.
Yes.
So this is a rather.
So, yeah, I mean, we're getting to the point like, you know, at transit, they can't get a bus tire at Public Works. It's really, the biggest is in the Public Works with water, wastewater and Public Works with Jim and his crew. Because, yeah, we're getting to the point now and a lot of times, I mean, we're on the phones with each other because Jim needs it right now and it's $700 and we can't buy our policy. We can't even just really give a verbal because the others will look at it. We have to have the policy in place, so he's trying to get ahold of Dave so Dave can get it to me. And it really, it really is slowing down processes and that's really why I brought it up. But yeah, just since April 1st, I went back and looked today and it's been.
And your recommendation is that it should be uniform here on all departments? Or is there certain departments that maybe they should be at different levels? So I'd lean on your expertise, what you're seeing, if it makes sense. So I think you're using a purchase card system, right?
So. We do, yeah.
Everybody's got a card and it's got this limit on it.
Yep, we do, we still do have a credit card system, so we still have that. But same thing, even if they're pushing out a credit card, if it's over the limit, they still have to go through the purchase order in order to purchase it. I guess I can say really Public Works is where we're seeing it the most. I, we really, like I said, transit a little bit, a little bit on the police side, but it really is Public Works that we're seeing the biggest impact on that. I think across the board, it probably, we could examine it department by department, but I think universally in most other cases, other than Public Works, I think mostly the department heads, the only one that's, like I can, I know this for my department, I'm really the only one that makes an order. If they need it, they come to me. I purchase it whether they want to or not. So I think it's really, it's come down to the Public Works is the one that's there, so.
In either case, like I said, every, we're not a huge, huge organization. So everyone knows what their, their staff is doing with that, so. And like I said, even if they had to make emergency and the department head wasn't at work that day, it's still coming through the system to be approved in the finance director. It's, yeah, it's being watched, so, but.
You mentioned a pretty large number between 500 and 1,500. How about between 1,500 and 2,500?
I have a few of them. The only reason that I honestly, the only reason I picked 2,500 is it's half. And, you know, $10,000 to $5,000, 2,500 is just kind of half.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
If the commission felt more comfortable at 1,500, they would still solve a lot of our problems. Because I would say the majority of the ones that I approved are honestly between that 500 to 1,500 dollar range.
The prices are going up, so.
Right, yeah. Well, maybe back in three years.
Next month, it'd be like, okay, well.
Ask it again later, but.
Yeah.
As long as the proper checks are in place, I am comfortable with it, so.
The record of finding the department, I think, we're good.
And that's why we're looking at doing this anyways for audit purposes to make sure that we're aligned.
Don't set yourself up for say.
Exactly, exactly.
Which is what we do sometimes.
Yep. Okay, we'll work on that and bring that back. And like I said, we're also, next meeting, we're going to be back to review the investment policy to take a look at those, those items too. All right, the assessor report. Kathy provided everyone here, and we have a couple of new commissioners on board that haven't necessarily been too much involved or seen too much of the assessing side of things. So Kathy broke down what the assessing department does staffing wise, tasks, then gave you some performance measures on what they are looking at on a yearly basis from the city of Alma. City St. Louis could be contracted through, they contract through us for their assessing services and the township of Sumner. Sumner, Emerson.
Yeah, do that.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got too many townships in my head. And Emerson, so. But broke that all down for you and what the department does. Also, what is in there is the obligations of not only the assessing department, but for us as the, at the commission level to make sure that, that we're doing the proper assessments, reporting properly to the state of Michigan, the tax commission, and then following up on all appeals and then submitting those back to the state of Michigan, so. So the other, before, let me see if there's anything Kathy wants to mention. I had some good news when I was gone. They were holding some interviews for a shared part-time position. Grace had left us to go do bigger, better things. And so, yeah, darn it, they want us to. So we had some conversations, working with Keegan and Kathy. Keegan is our equalization director of the county, to maybe share a part-time position with the county and us here. We actually, I was surprised, I was thankful, though we received eight applications. They interviewed four individuals last Wednesday. They came to an agreement, and I talked to Kathy about it on Friday of last week. Sounds like a great person, and has already some experience and some certification that someone's given started in the business, we've used. Is willing to take on this unique position of, you know, we would basically, at 20 hours, in the county, 20 hours to keep it part-time, and each, each municipality would pay for that individual on each side. And then learn both of those, those sides of the field. So I'm very happy, and also, not only is this person qualified to do that, but both Kathy and Keegan were excited to bring this person on, so we're going through that process to bring her on. And, and her name's Jessica Morris. And hopefully, by June, we'll have her in the office and get her trained and fielded and things like that. I'm excited about that, because it'll be very helpful for us and the county. So Kathy, did you want anything for the commission?
Yeah, you didn't want me to?
Yeah, come on, yeah.
Of course.
Just to make you uncomfortable.
So, so, yeah, well, I'll start with the, the shared collaboration with Greshit County. I, we needed a part-time person, which is very difficult to find, so I knew that the county needed a part-time person, and equalization in assessing. We essentially do the same type of duties, but equalization is required by state statute, and so is assessing. So I reached out to Keegan and asked if we could collaborate and offer two part-time positions to essentially make it a full-time position, and we could attract more qualified candidates. I think it worked. We had eight candidates, we interviewed four. The job advertisement was kind of, I was trying to attract a certain individual that would be qualified and that would understand that this could be an opportunity, because there is a shortage of assessors in the state of Michigan, actually all over every state. It seems there's a shortage of assessors, so we need to attract new assessors somehow. So, and the person that we hired, she had one year of experience in White Lake Township. Her, she grew up in assessing, her mom was the assessor of City of Flynn, so she has a little bit of experience growing up in that field. She has her Michigan Certified Assessing Technician certification. She went out and got that on her own in February, and she's enrolled in the Michigan Certified Assessing Officer Program that starts next month. So she saw this as an opportunity, she knows that you need a mentor in this profession, and I think she'll be here for a while. She, she's passionate about it, and I think it's going to be good for Keegan, and I, we have a good training program set up. I was able to contract Grace back to train in the field, so I'm very fortunate for that. So, yeah, and we have the state audit, which you saw in your report, so I'm sure you're thankful that this is an annual report. A lot of good information in there. The state audit, like Eric said, is, it's a local unit review, so in the past, these audits have been, they've always been a local unit review, but it's been focused on the assessor, so unfortunately, some of the assessors in the state have been decertified because they haven't, well, some of them have just haven't been doing their job, but some of them didn't have the resources to do their job. And unfortunately, in some of the townships and cities, the attitude has been, well, that's your problem, the assessor's problem. So now, the state, under assessing reform, is looking at, it's not the assessor's problem, it is partially their problem, they have to do their job, but they have to have the local unit officials oversee the assessor. So a lot of people haven't been paying attention to what the assessors have been doing, and so we had assessing reform in 2018, so a lot of these requirements are due to that, which I agree with most of them, so. I think you have everything you need for the audit, and I think we're going to do really well in the audit. I think that's about it, unless anyone has any questions?
Who has the first question? One thing I know through our past experience, and, you know, congratulations on everything you bring to the table for us, because I know you are extremely well-respected throughout the state for what you've achieved, and things that you do and the way you do things, so thank you for that, first of all. And the talent you've developed with your team is pretty incredible, too, for our small, little rural community here. Sounds like you're at it again, developing, giving this individual an opportunity to work with you. Are, we're going to have to look at providing benefits? I assume we got two part-time positions here, which is savings to us with no benefits, I'm guessing, for both entities?
The City of Alma is a part-time position, and Greshit County, that's a contracted position. So this individual will be paid from the county, and they'll be paid from the City of Alma. So it's two separate positions, so they'll work Monday through Wednesday for the City of Alma, Thursday, Friday, Greshit County. They'll be housed here at the city, they'll have the office here, but they do have remote capabilities for equalization eventually, to process deeds and...
And we've, we're on the fire employment, this isn't going to be a problem for doing things this way? Just make sure we're not violating any employment rules, that trying to skirt things.
Now, if I may just briefly, Mr. Mayor, this is a perfectly acceptable solution, the way that we're discussing it. I actually just, a couple of weeks ago, finished a contract between a township in Saginaw County and a city in Tuscola County, for them to do this exact same thing, except they're sharing a wastewater treatment operator, so. But there's a statute, the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act, and so it does allow us to do what we're discussing.
Just want to make sure we're treating people fairly and following all the rules.
Yes, definitely, and I think more people are going to be forced to do this, that there's a lot of communities, actually, some in Saginaw County, that they cannot find an assessor.
Yeah, just on that point, I handle the tax appeals for, I think, four or five municipalities, and I would concur with that. It's a pretty shallow pool out there, and there's the, when I first started, there was an assessor for one township that had been doing it 40 years or so, then he retired, and in the past, you know, three years since his retirement, there's been three different assessors, so it's, it is a pretty shallow pool, so I would, I would concur with that.
Yeah, we're fortunate that Kathy's put together a chain that serves our couple of local entities, three of them, and I can see a lot more of that happening going forward.
And as you stated, Mr. Mayor, Kathy's extremely competent, obviously, and a great asset. And I think, for a variety of reasons, there seems to be somewhat, a high level of turnover, but even beyond that, it's just difficult to find folks, so I would definitely concur with that.
I had the idea of going to a seminar or two with her, and I can understand why it's hard to find folks. It's a tough job.
And I do have that material still, I could provide it to the local, it's the basics of assessing for local unit officials, and that's what Greg and the former city manager attended, so they haven't been offering that class anymore, but I still have the material, and I should still be.
We'll pass her on the sign-up sheet.
Yes, yes. So, well, with that being said, you know, what Adam said, I commend the city commission for allowing St. Louis and Emerson. Emerson's a tiny township, there's not much going on, and when we originally set that up, it was just, you know, so taxpayers could just contact the assessor. Because usually, assessors, they do other townships, that's nothing out of the normal, but it's evenings and weekends, because you wouldn't do that type of work during your Monday through Friday job. You know, so you're contacting those taxpayers after 5:00 and on the weekends. So the whole idea was, okay, so for the taxpayers, now they have a full-time assessor that they can talk to, but in some of the townships, there's just not much going on, so it's, it's just, it's hard for them to find, there's no way they could find a full-time assessor. And the City of St. Louis, well, I was the assessor there for 15 years, and then left and took this job, and they've actually been through three assessors since then, so that would have been since 2000, well, 2013, to 20, to May 2019 is when we took over this contract, so three assessors, so. Yeah, and Keegan Bangle, he is a master-level assessor, like myself, and we both enjoy mentoring, and I, like you said, I've had two master-level assessors come out of this city, and that's pretty impressive in this profession. You don't, there's only 100, there's 194 master-level assessors out of 2,000 assessors when I obtained my master level, and they're mostly retired. So to actually get somebody to want to jump into the master level, that's pretty impressive. So there was Mashai and Trina, and I'm incredibly proud of them, so I'm hoping this next person will eventually do the same thing, but we will be able to utilize their services here, so.
Perfect.
I could go on and on.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Last chance, anybody have a question for Kathy?
So, let me give you, I want to give you some of the bad news, probably do more good news, that's, you know, good news we got, just taking care of...
Same tune, please.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to learn from something, people are like, don't add on bad news, so I'm going to change this a little. I did put in a packet, we had some vandalism in our new park restrooms in Wright Park. And like I said in the newsletter, I had to take a couple of deep breaths before I set, you know, talked to staff, and talked with both Public Works and the Public Safety Department to work on, you know, putting together some kind of a camera system to put in Wright Park and, and Ukulele, because we do get a lot of vandalism over there, too, so we're going to start in those two parks. And we invested close to $1 million in those three, three restrooms for that sort of thing to happen, so we're bringing back something at some point to let the commission know and the Parks Board know what we've come up with and how it can work. And I also debated myself before I, you know, sent this packet out to you, should I include the pictures? And I said, yes, I'm going to show you. But I think sometimes people believe that we do have the analysis, why would people do this stuff, and sharing that they do it? So if you see something, you know, let someone know that someone's up to something, and so we can let the police know and get them out there. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that, and the community know that, too, that keep your eyes open to that sort of stuff. All right, enough of the bad news, we'll go back to the good news. Our Nebrich Street projects are going very well. Iowa Street and Harvard Street, their sanitary sewers are complete. They're working on the water and stormwater portions of the project right now. We did include a couple of photos from each one of the streets, and as you can see, it is a total reconstruction of the streets, and, and like I said, they're going very well, and so far, so good. Nothing's made it to my desk about any complaints, so that's, that's always a good thing. Island Festival. We're in this week, Island Festival week, I can't believe it. It's our 54th, and as tradition, the commission is invited to walk in, in the parade. The parade itself starts at 10:30, and usually the commission is a little closer to the front, so, you know, be there by 10:00. I put 9:30 in your packet, but, you know, if you guys, you know, if you're somewhere else, be there at least by 10:00. And then there is a luncheon that's for the commission to attend at 11:30 at the Entertainment Tent, and then they'll usher us over to the opening ceremonies at 12:15 at the Alma School of Law. So we'll see everybody this weekend. And, and then lastly, wanted to end on another great employee recognition through the Alma Fire Department, Jack Snyder, this last May, has served 50 years on the Fire Department. And along with that, as you can see, the Fire Department, in one way or another, is only 150 years old. So the Fire Department is celebrating their 150th this year, and Jack's been a part of that department some way or another for the last 50 years. So we want to say thanks to Jack, and his anniversary, or his date of hire was May 10 of 1973, so I was two years old, I think, at that point, so. And then Jack also worked for the Alma, the Alma Library, and they put up a 150th celebration tribute in the historical portion of the library, so if you have a chance to go over there and see it, it's an entity in the community celebrating 150 years there. At some point, we talked with Mark Williams, the Public Safety Director, and we're going to have some kind of an open house for the Fire Department. Underneath one of our projects for this year is the approaches area out front of the City Hall, so we'd like to get those done before we hold the public open house, and that could be an opening for that, to get that project done. So thanks to Jack, congratulations. And we have another one coming up for 50 years here, too, that we'll be talking about in our next meeting, so thanks for your service, and thanks to everybody that's served in the Fire Department over the last 150 years, so it's pretty amazing. And we only did the Cessna Centennial in 2006, so our department didn't come along too far after, so that's why I have to do it.
Okay. Anybody have more questions for Eric? Hearing none, I believe we have a motion on the table to accept his report, so all those in favor would be yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, accepting your report. We went on to new business, we need to consider a resolution to rescind Resolution Number 2021-0101 of June 22, 2021, and approve the same Oprah application, which is an obsolete property rehabilitation act, Oprah, application with a correction to the applicant's name, which was originally titled 120 East Superior Street LLC to 120 E Superior LLC. It looks like it was just a typo or error.
That's correct.
Somebody typed it on our name, so. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Is, I believe the motion is to rescind and approve, is that what you said?
Sure.
That's what I thought, I heard, but I, and we did have support. Anytime you have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Thank you, and good luck with your project, right?
Yes, and just as a side note...
So you can see that go forward.
Yep, and just as a side note, they are getting underway. They picked up their building permits and stuff last week, so that $4 million-plus-dollar project will be underway, will have some new apartments in downtown.
Cool. Need more housing. Next, next up is appropriations, is anyone interested in paying the bills?
Move to pay the appropriations.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on that list? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, and you can pay the bills. Commissioner comments. Roxanne, would you like to go first?
Thank you for all the work and your great, relations to Jack, 50 years, and thanks, Kathy, for all of your hard work, and we have the budget, so thanks to your team, so everybody's doing great, so.
That's a good news.
Roger?
All of that. Just in tie-in, both with Eric's report and with the stuff that we heard about having to replace all the infrastructure. The Harvard project is next to my house, in fact, I think one of those pictures was taken from my corner, and I spent some time, when I got off the bus yesterday, standing around, looking at the hall and bothering people and asking them questions and stuff. And one of the things I noticed in putting, they were putting the sanitary sewer in right next to my house, and digging and pulling stuff out and putting the green things down and tying them in and stuff, and I asked one of them, I said, are you just going on top of the old ones? I don't notice you taking any old pipes out. He said, that's because you didn't see them, because when they pick up a shovel full of dirt, that is the old pipes. They simply disintegrate as you pull them out, they just come out in little bitty pieces or pieces and just go right into the truck, and so that's where the infrastructure is right now. I'm not sure how old that is down by my neck of the woods, but I've lived there 53 years, and this is the first time we've had that street dug up, so that's at least that old, so. Anyway.
Imagine, well, well beyond that 53 years.
Yeah, I think so, I think so. They're doing a wonderful job, very, very... Oh yeah, I think so. I think so. They're doing a wonderful job. Very courteous, very considerate, very nice people. They've had to move the roadblock sign twice so I could get into my driveway, but they've done that stuff.
Cost overruns are going to be because of Roger.
Very impressed with them. Learned a lot just looking at all, I really did.
That is the news. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Lori?
I think my daughter's going to be happy with those line replacements because I'm pretty sure her house is one of them. And we were complaining about the water pressure in the house. We said, you got to replace it. Now that might be good news. Anyway, everybody have a great Highland Festival weekend.
We'll send your assessment. Congratulations. Michelle?
Congratulations to Alma High School graduating class of 2023. School ends next week. And just wishing the kids a good, nice, safe summer and have fun. And just remember those kids that enjoy school rather than being at home because it's a rough time. A lot of kids are excited for school to end and some kids don't have the best summer. So just think of them too, that there's plenty of options hopefully that they can get to do during the summer. So just try to remember those kids too.
Thank you. Drew?
Congratulations to Mr. Snyder. That's 50 years. That's impressive. And just looking forward to Highland Festival this weekend. So.
Sarah? Nothing. Mr. Turner?
Nothing else for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Just a reminder, we did send it out in the water bills, but the household hazardous waste program is coming up June 6th, 7th, and 8th. If you have any batteries, tires, old paint, paint thinners, those sort of things, you need to call the Public Works Garage and set up an appointment to drop off those materials. If you are, you must be a citizen of the United, of the United States.
Wow, you're blowing it up.
Very proud of you.
We're going to solve all the country's problems.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, the city of Alma, Ray Carers, and the city of St. Louis. We work together on this household waste program with them. So apologize, please don't show up from Ohio or.
You're in a township.
You're in a township. Yep, 6th, 7th, and 8th. Please use the program. We pay for that through our rates and keep it out of the waste.
And you have to call and schedule a time, right?
Yes, call and schedule a time. Yep. It keeps it out of, you know, ditches, keeps it out of our storm sewers and sanitary sewers.
Super easy.
Please, please do that.
Yeah, it's a great service. It's very, very easy. Whoever's in there, I've been through there a couple of times over the years. Okay, yeah, and for myself, certainly extending congratulations to Jack and the entire fire department and all the great work that they do day in and day out. And I call all the time. It's very impressive. Yeah, thanks to everyone. The budget, you saving money in the audit is really welcome news. For many years, we paid extra on the audit because we had issues. So congratulations to the staff on everything. Kathy, great report again. No surprise there, but thank you. So with that, we'll open it up to members of the public. If anyone would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll give you up to five minutes to share your thoughts. Who would like to go first? Please do. Haven't seen you in a while, Mr. Roseanne.
I've been gone. Bless him back. Les Roseanne, 89 Mill Street, here in the city of Alma. I have three things. One is how fortunate we are as a community to have that community theater down the street. I ushered for two of the performances Friday nights and then we went with friends on Saturday, this last Saturday. Each performance that I go to, I am amazed. Little Gresham County puts that together. And the work, and it's not, the performers are, and I think Lori will confirm, they come from a wider range in Gresham County. But the people in Gresham County get them to come. And it just, we are really extremely fortunate to have that. And I think that can't be said enough. And I hope most of you got to see it. It is a little quirky to understand, but I did research on it and it made sense after I looked at it. So anyway, as you know, I bicycle around town a lot and tend to notice certain things. I found two safety hazards, I think, just to go on record and make sure something is done on them. Just east of the boat launch there, that there's lookout, walkway lookout. There have been trees growing up underneath it that have actually widened out the railing area. And the pipes in that railing area have, in two sections, are basically collapsed. One, it would be very easy for a child, and I've watched these kids do that, to get on that and they run ahead, you know? And there are places where they could run right off of that and into the river. And the other one was eastward street, and I'm not sure the cross street, right around the corner. There was a recent fire at a home there. And my understanding, the way the process is supposed to work, is if the building is uninhabitable, it's got to be inspected. I think the county does that. I'm not sure. It'd be posted, but it's wide open yet. And the fire was the first part of, that fire was the first part of the handling.
Yep, it was, yep.
And it's still wide open.
There's a, the insurance company's doing their assessment and walking through it yet. Soon as they're done with that, we'll get them to board it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the community like to share their thoughts?
I have nothing.
You have nothing. Okay. And thank you, Les, for reminding me. I intended to mention this, the play too. That was wonderful. Thank you, Lori, for bringing that to us.
Good team, everybody.
It is a great team. Now, they were fortunate to have that along with their close neighbor, the Community Art Center. Another just gem of an asset.
You were even, you were even in the script.
Yeah, yeah.
Ed, you mentioned.
You gotta be nice to Lori. Lori's who you know.
As long as Doug remembered the name, seems okay.
No, it was a great show. I thought it was very funny. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn for tonight. Get ready for the Highland Festival.
Support.
Motion's support. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion's carried. We're going to adjourn. Thank you very much. Everybody have a great Highland Festival weekend.